I'll call our meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. If you would like to join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do want to just mention before I open for public audience that SCTV is in high demand right now. So, we are not live. We will be recorded and released on a, oh, I know you call yourself not SCTV anymore.
No.
Simsbury Community Media?
Media.
Okay. But we will be on the website when they're ready.
Tomorrow.
But we do have, Planning is meeting tonight to talk about the capital improvement plan, and the Board of Finance is getting the Board of Selectment's budget. And those meetings took a little higher priority than our regular business. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware. All right. So, you will be recorded in perpetuity. Do we have any public audience tonight? Okay. So then, we can start with committee reports and Board of Ed communications. So, Alex, I'll go to you.
All right. So, starting off, there was a successful report card conference sessions at all the elementary schools last week. There was both an in-person option and a virtual option for parents, but it was wonderful to see everyone either way. At Squadron Line this Friday will be Decades Spirit Day with all proceeds going to Heifer International, a nonprofit organization working to end world hunger. And I believe I touched on this last time. It's been a little while, but the Tree Plenish Campaign is still going on, and the deadline to purchase a sapling and plant it is coming up on March 30.
And who's organizing that?
That's Squadron.
That's Squadron.
Take Action Club at Squadron.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Central will also be having a spirit day this week with Blue and Gold Day on Friday. And they also announced that Central Celebrates will be coming back on May 13 at Simsbury Farms. For Terrafill, there will be a PTO fundraiser this week on Friday at the Hartford Wolfpack Hockey Game with all students and families welcome. And Terrafill last week also had a very successful student art show with special thanks to Mr. RB for organizing it all. Not much for Latimer this week, but it has been announced that the All Are Welcome Here Multicultural Festival is returning, and planning is already underway for that celebration. Henry James had a very successful PJ Day last week, raising over $1,600 to be donated to teens at CCMC recently diagnosed with cancer. We were able to raise awareness and come together to support a member of our community. And then, lastly, at the high school tomorrow is SAT testing day for juniors, so there's an altered bell schedule in place. And it's also the first run of the SAT that's fully digital. Last week, NHS held a Run-A-Thon fundraiser over the weekend in light of the Russian invasion of Ukraine to raise money for Ukrainian refugees. And lastly, with March Madness in full swing, the Student Council is holding their annual bracket competition with prizes awarded to staff and student winners.
Terrific. Thanks very much. How is school without masks? You're looking forward to it. I know we haven't spoken since you've been to school.
Yeah. It's interesting seeing everyone's faces again, but I think it's really good, yeah.
Sharon.
Nothing for me.
Lyd.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Next week, I will be attending the NSBA Annual Conference. This will be our first conference in person. In San Diego, we have about 3,000-plus people coming from all around the country. This is the annual conference where we have a delegate assembly, like we have our own state association delegate assemblies. So, we will be, we have several, quite a few proposed resolutions that we will probably be debating on the floor. And these resolutions are what we will be using for the, well, coming next winter and even before that, for lobbying our congressional delegation. So, that's what we will be doing, especially at there. On the crack front, we've had several meetings on this. We're all in budget time right now, but, you know, we talked a lot in crack and I've mentioned a lot what's going on in crack over the year, what have you on that. But we talk a lot about program budgets, about the revenue, projected revenue, fees, tuitions, and grants. And I'm going to talk about some bills that were passed in the legislature, because this is where we are at the moment right now. So, we had one bill, Senate Bill 227, that passed, and that's an 8% increase in the per pupil magnet school grant. So, you may be hearing of some of these things coming through some emails or just if you do in the news or what have you. But these are some of the highlights of some of these. Senate Bill 227 was specific, was a specific bill for an increase to magnet school grants. And, you know, the state pays 75 to 80% cost. And that has not changed for any magnet grant in 12 years. So, this is what we are going to be up against, you know, come the end of this legislative session, which will be in May. So, and a big part of this is that, you know, if this is not passed, the only recourse is to charge the sending districts. And we've been talking about this for years, about what, we don't want to have to do that.
Right.
But that's where, that's where things are. So, on the other piece, some of the, there've been public hearings. Yesterday, yours truly testified after, you know, I listened to it, but then it was about seven hours later that I testified. But before the Education Committee, this is the last public hearings, and now they're going to be passed, and they will be going on now to final votes, because the legislature will end in a short time. So, one of the big ones was Senate Bill 1, and that's the Act on Childhood Mental and Physical Health Services in Schools. And we've been talking about this even before COVID, even through COVID, and now through all the districts. So, we are, this really, this is an important bill that we really hope gets passed. Another one is on the Act on Minority Teacher Recruitment and Retention. So, a lot of these that you're familiar with, this is another one that we, again, are pushing through the legislature. I testified on Senate Bill 429, and that's an act authorization of state grant commitments for school building projects and revisions to the school building project statutes. And I testified on behalf of crack for this one. And, but also, there were several districts, Kathy Greeter and some of the Farmington legislators and board was there, and they testified on this one, too. So, this is a real important piece, and, you know, I'm glad that districts worthy are testifying along with me about this. So, this is where we are. And the big one is an act implementing the governor's budget recommendations concerning education. So, this is the big one to pay attention to. The ECS funding continues at the, for year 2021 level. And then, the tenure phase, phase-in-out commitment ends in 2030. So, that's down the road, but this is something that we talk about now. The Alliance District funding is reauthorized for another five years. The Sped, Special Excess Cost Reimbursement Grant continues to be capped. And then, recognizing the success of summer enrichment programs, which we participated in and many, many districts did, but these are areas that, that, you know, we have testified before legislature last year and this year. So, so that's where we are with everything. And to close it out, the chef case, there's $26 million in next year for year '23 has been proposed. So, by next year, there'll be 440 seats for Hartford students in the participation. So, that's what's going on on the legislative front. It's been very active and very busy, but this is the time. And, you know, if there's anything in particular that you feel very strong about or anything in these areas, give me a call. And, but, you know, we got to contact our legislators to make sure that they understand, you know, what this means. These are, a lot of these bills and acts that have been coming forward are things that we've had from even last year and talked about in a short session. They really aren't proposing anything new. It's an election cycle, so that's where the difference is between that. So, more to come in the next month than before and before.
And then, a couple of those, as you mentioned, really important to crack, because the tuition could impact local districts.
Yes.
And it hasn't been funded appropriately.
Right.
And they don't have a means to fund capital improvement either. People don't realize this.
Right, right.
That they had that windfall of dollars years ago when they built the magnet schools, but they have an upkeep problem on the capital front.
Right.
And I imagine that's part of the
That's what I
Construction legislation.
Absolutely. Because, because along with other districts, you know, like around the, around the state in terms of, of, you know, of capital projects and things and school construction. But, you know, we have, our oldest school in crack, our oldest magnet school, is over 20 years old. Hard to believe, you know, that, and I remember it was first built. But we are also in that mind of that with our schools. And there's about five or six schools that hit that range. And, you know, when it hits that range, that we've got, you know, start looking at this. So, this was a big press yesterday with the legislator, legislatures about funding that. Because if this is not funded through this, the cost will be, will be given, you know, on the districts, and they will end up having to pay the cost. And we just feel that it's not fair. I mean, this is, this is something the state should have been funding for years and years and years. And then, all of a sudden, to say, you know, that, well, they'll think about it or look at it wrong, because we are the sending districts. Our legislators represent all these districts. And there were several that were testifying along with me about the importance of this. So, so hopefully, and remember, we have new legislators that were voted in in, in May, in last November, who are really new to a lot of this. They're new to the chef case, you know, the, you know, final settlement. They're new to a lot of these things. So, it's kind of educating them. I got some questions, you know, and I, from veterans, and Doug McCory was on the line. So, and he is the co-chair of the Education Committee. So, it was good. We had a little dialogue, but some of the others are very new to this. So, it's trying to bring them up to speed of where we are and the importance of what's going to happen in the next month and a half, basically, so.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for doing that.
So, that's it.
Mr. Temple.
I have nothing.
John?
Good.
Tara.
Hi. So, I went to the, I was lucky enough to go to the Simsbury High School Hall of Fame Dinner on Friday night, where we honored some outstanding athletes and teams from Simsbury's history. It's a wonderful, it was a wonderful night, and a lot of great celebrating of some really talented people. And the good news is that Simsbury Community Media will have it on their website. They videotaped the whole thing, so everybody is welcome to see that. I don't know when it'll be up, but I can imagine it'll probably be up in a, within a week or so. So, I suggest everyone go look at it and, and see. It was pretty great. I also want to mention that because Martin Luther King Day in Simsbury was postponed in January due to the COVID, and then, we were going to have the celebration at the First Church in March, but then they had a flood. So, we ended up deciding to do a program, a video program. So, we have created a video program, and it's in the can, and hopefully, that will be out in a week. We did it with Simsbury, with Patrick at Simsbury Community Media. And so, I'm just sending you over there a lot. There's a lot going on. So, check it out. We've got Simsbury Singers, we've got, we've got keynote addresses. It'll be a great, it's a great program, and I think it'll be a wonderful way to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King.
Thank you. Tara?
Mrs. Loveky.
Two pieces of information. We were really excited to hear from the Connecticut Writers Project that about 50 students in grades three through six across our district were recognized for their writing in different genres across all five elementary schools. So, 50 would be a lot to bring in here to the board, but the principals will be recognizing each one of those writers through a personalized letter and recognition within the school, and just wanted to share with the board that good news. And then, the second piece is we have Olaf coming very soon to Henry James Memorial School for Disney's Frozen Junior. So, that will be held kickoff weekend is this weekend, March 25th and 26th, as well as next weekend, April 1st and 2nd. Fridays at 7:30, Saturdays at 2:00 p.m. and 7:30. There will be general admission, and tickets will be sold at the door. So, come on and check it out.
Thank you.
You are.
Mr. Sullivan.
A very happy piece of news to start off with. In your folders tonight is an invitation to our annual Staff Recognition Ceremony, which has not been an annual ceremony for a couple of years. So, to be back in person this year, it'll take place on April 21st. So, we are in the planning stages at that. And want, many of the board members have come over the years and enjoy the event. We celebrate not only our retirees at that event, but all staff, certified and non-certified, who have reached milestone years of service, starting at 10 years, 15, 20, 25. And sometimes, we get pretty high. 45, 50 is not unusual. So, once again, April 21st at Henry James, and want to make sure that you had that invitation. The second, I just wanted to give you a quick update about where we are in the last few weeks. I've been in a lot of meetings along with Jason Casey and Mike Luzetti about the Latimer Lane Project. I know when we were together last presenting to the Board of Finance on the budget, that there was some discussion around the cost estimates coming in over budget. A figure of $5 to $7 million was thrown out at that time and got a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of reconciliation of those numbers over the last few weeks. The number that, the more accurate number that we're now working with is a $3.2 million overrun. In this environment of supply chain issues and inflationary trends, it's not unusual, but it still does need to be dealt with. And what I can report, we don't have answers yet, but there are a very good spirit in the meetings of cooperation, figuring it out, to make sure that the bid process has not slowed down. So, we are looking at a bid process that would take place really in June to kind of get going after that. So, that's the immediate goal in front of us, to make sure that whatever needs to get reconciled doesn't slow the process down for that threshold of bid opening. So, very good meeting with the person who is from the Office of School Construction and Grants today. So, we need to hear back from him, and I think in another couple of weeks, we'll be in a much better place to give you a more specific report about where we are on that.
Well, I never thought $3 million overruns would sound good, but it does, after where we are. So, thank you.
Neil, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just, I know we, we lost a science teacher in eighth grade. Any, any update there? With one that went out on medical leave?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't say a whole lot about that, other than that a person did have to go on leave.
Right.
And there, we have our building substitute in place, and I have to get, I have to get an update from Mr. Baker where we are on a subsolution for that. So, I'll get your information privately. So, I lost track where we are on that one right now.
Okay. Mr. Curtis?
Just one piece I wanted to reiterate. We had an opportunity to present our operating and capital budgets on the 8th to the Board of Finance. I thought it was a really productive conversation and very well-supported. So, I know the Board of Selectmen are presenting tonight. And I think with the combination of, you know, needs being met and supported that we have with increased revenues in the town, I mean, it sounds like it'll be a successful budget season in that I believe we'll be able to present budgets that do not increase the bill rate, which sounds to be the goal of the Board of Finance, and I think is important in this climate. So, more to come on that, and we'll be working on a community letter to go out to explain the specifics, talk to the Board of Finance and Maria as well about maybe a joint letter because of the type of collaboration that went on this year, and we'll get that out to everybody in the coming weeks.
And I'm just looking here, and just as a reminder, the public hearing will be April 5th. Do we have a where?
The Public Library.
The Public Library?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, anybody who has questions on the budget can see us at the Public Library on April 5th. All right. With that, we have the recommended actions, approval of minutes of the February 23rd meeting. Can I get motions on that, please?
I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oop, we don't have our masks, and we don't have dirty hands. Personnel.
I'll abstain.
You're abstaining.
I was not there. You too, Jen.
Oh, wait. Sorry. We're all good. Okay. Personnel.
Oh, you come, I'm trying to get an update.
Now, you're multitasking.
I gotta stop. Put your phone down, all right? So, a couple of actions tonight in the different categories that we usually deal with, beginning with a couple of resignations. We start with Jess Anastasio, who is a special educator here at Tooten Hills. She's been at Henry James before that, has been with us for the last five years. Jess is looking for a different experience, going to stay in education, but is headed toward a private school experience for next year. So, she'll be with us through June 30th. In addition, Jenna Nalband is a science teacher at Simsbury High School. She has been out this year on a maternity leave, and this now is her deciding not to come back from that maternity leave. So, it's a resignation effective June 30th as well. So, the motion is there for somebody to make on the exhibit.
Can I get someone to?
Sure. Move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Jessica Anastasio and Jenna Nalband effective June 30, 2022.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have retirement.
Yeah. Retirement, two different retirement motions. One is, the first one is a retirement for the end of this year. So, congratulations on making that decision to Sharon Schloss, who is a speech and language pathologist at Squadron Line. You can see she has served for 27 years in that role and is really one of the leaders of that department within our district. So, we certainly thank Sharon for her service and congratulate her on her retirement.
Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Sharon Schloss effective June 30, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your dedicated service.
And then, a notice of retirement, but not the right-of-way kind, the kind of three-years-out kind. So, congratulations to Jill Van Vortis, who is an elementary teacher, primary grades teacher at Central School. You can see right now, she is at 34 and a half years of service. So, she's going for the full Magilla here to the top threshold when you retire. And so, but we hang on to her till June 30, 2025. So, Jill's going to still be with us for a little bit, but we do need to accept this motion now.
I'll move. I moved that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Jill Van Vortis effective June 30, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for hanging around for three more years.
Yeah. And then, two appointments, they, they're informational, they don't require your action. It's unusual at this time of year for me to be talking about teachers we're hiring, but based on some of the resignations we've had in the last couple of months, I think you'll know why we're doing this. The first is Amy Joyce, who replaces a teacher that also did not, decided not to come back from maternity leave. And Amy comes to us at Central School and started about a week ago, two weeks ago, on March 9th. So, we welcome Amy to the Central School community. And then, Rachel Schlecker, we had a resignation of another speech and language pathologist in our preschool. So, this is a much-needed position, and she actually began last week. So, I promise you that Amy and Rachel are the last hire, full hires for this year. Anybody else who needs to replace, it'll be a long-term sub for the rest of the year. And we'll start this fun again in September.
I just thought you locked the doors.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, I'll have to leave. Thank you very much. So, now, we have approval of scholarships.
Yes, there's two scholarships for the board's consideration tonight. The first is Exhibit 3, which is a new scholarship, the CSZ Foundation Scholarship. The scholarship is awarded in memory of Connor Scott Zike. And this foundation was started after his passing to support young adults who are struggling with substance abuse, inner mental health issues, and really, at the end of the day, to decrease the stigma associated with mental health. So, the foundation is making a number of scholarships in his memory across the Farmington Valley districts, and Simsbury High School has been noted as to be one of those recipients. So, it's a generous scholarship of $5,000 to be awarded to a graduating senior. Certainly, you can see the criteria there, but there's a motion for your consideration at the bottom of the exhibit.
Can I get a motion for that, please?
Yeah. I'll move that the Board of Education approve the CSZ Foundation Scholarship to be dispersed starting in 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry for the reason for the scholarship, but that's incredibly generous.
Very generous.
And really, will be appreciated, I'm sure, by whoever is lucky enough to receive it.
The second scholarship is one that was proposed by Simsbury High School, and they're calling it the Equity Council Scholarship. They generated these funds. It was actually the culmination of Equity Week, and some local restaurants donated luncheon, a luncheon to the Simsbury High School faculty. And they said, okay, we're going to take up a donation, and those funds raised will kind of give back to the students. And the, those who donated the food were A-OK with that, and they raised more money than expected. So, this is an amended exhibit. It was initially $250, but they would like to increase that to a $500 award to a graduating senior, beginning with this graduating class, for their leadership skills in a club or activity that supports the equity initiatives of all students. So, student organizations will be asked to nominate a candidate for consideration, and all eligible nominees must have submitted the local scholarship application that we use. But there's a motion for your consideration at the bottom of this exhibit as well.
Can I get someone to make that motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approve the Simsbury High School Equity Council Scholarship to be dispersed starting 2022.
Second.
Lots of second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to the teachers at the high school and the Equity Council there. Very much appreciated. And now, got to touch up, oh, calendar.
We're going to keep rolling with me, I guess, on the side of the table tonight. We are looking at the approval of a 2023-2024 school calendar. The calendar was prepared in accordance with all of our state guidelines, our Board of Education's school calendar established policies in accordance with the union contractual working days, as well as our calendar advisory committee. We all remember that calendar advisory committee of 2009, their recommendations. So, it's all aligned with those bodies. You may recall that the state legislator used to have a requirement of a regional calendar. They've removed that requirement. Nevertheless, we keep the spring recess of this calendar as the second full week of April. There is also some professional development notations on this calendar and holidays that are observed. What isn't on this calendar is the early release days for professional development. Those will come certainly at a later time, but again, this is a draft for 2023-2024.
I don't see April.
April is missing from our exhibit.
Yeah.
That's a heck of a vacation.
That's right.
You get the whole month.
There's no month. Yeah, there's nothing going on any.
That's spring break right there.
The whole month. That's great.
I have it in my exhibit.
We know it's online, too.
Unless I've done something when I copied them, I don't know how that happened.
Okay.
Would I email this?
No.
Nope. It's there.
Who would like to see it?
You have it.
I have April in my exhibit.
It wasn't our email. It wasn't the email.
It wasn't the email.
Yes.
Because I just flipped the page here. I don't know. Fascinating.
But, that said. Do we have to make, we don't have to make a motion, do we?
Yes, we actually do. We have to make a motion to adopt the 23-24 calendar as presented. What April shows is that the second week of April is the full week of the April vacation. That's the only notation on the month of April.
Okay.
Yeah. April 8th through the 12th, it says that right on the bottom.
It does say it at the bottom. It's just the picture of the month.
I make a motion that we accept the calendar as presented. As except, as we saw on our, on the, when we got it.
Would anyone like to? If you pull it up on your email, it's on your email.
We got it. We got it on here.
I don't want to do all Robert's homework on you.
We got it.
We've discussed it.
Yes. There's a motion on the table.
So, we have a motion on the table. And we have an exception. I do have one discuss, one more discussion question. When did the state lift the requirement, the regional requirements? I want to say it was pre-COVID. I'll say four years ago.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. Really? I just didn't notice because of COVID problem. Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor of the calendar, including April? Signify by aye, please.
Aye.
I need a second for that.
All right. So, let's get the calendar topic from last conference.
I'd like to make just point of, point of discussion. I saw Tara looking at me over there. Since Tara was actually the founding board member of that committee, Calendar Advisory Committee, going back in 2009, she is readily available to assist.
I never said that.
In any possible way.
I don't know where the bus is, but Lydia, who's driving?
All righty then. This should be a much easier motion. We need to cancel the April 12th
We need to cancel the April 12th meeting due to the fact that in the current year, which has April, there is spring break.
Correct.
We don't like April.
April's not our friend. So can I get a motion to cancel the April 12th meeting, please?
Move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on April 12th, 2022.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and with that, I'm going to once again remind our board members that the week before, please attend public hearing. What did I say that date was?
Fifth.
April 5th. At the public library, please make a note of that. I'm sure you'll get emails to that effect as well. Okay. Do we have a time, Katie?
Six o'clock.
It's gonna be six o'clock?
April 5th, six o'clock.
All right, be there, be square. Okay, enough fooling around. Now we get the Tooeen Hills school report.
Great. I'm going to invite the team colleagues, Ms. Pannier, Ms. Champagne, and Ms. Alekandra. Would you please join me at the table? And in public audience are also team members, Mrs. Bruno and Mrs. Marczukowski, who are part of the student intervention team. They won't be speaking directly tonight, but certainly want to acknowledge their support and the great work that's done each and every day for our students at Tooeen Hills. So we are really excited to share with you some information about intervention and our supportive response. I am going to do my best to fill in for Mrs. Belmonte, the principal of Tooeen Hills. She is following Mr. Sullivan's suggestion, if you are sick, stay home. And she has been under the weather and wants so much to be here. But it just represents the great work that gets done with and for our kids every single day at Tooeen Hills. So this is a slide that certainly is familiar to the board members. It is the strategic plan prioritization from my team, the Office of Teaching and Learning. Right, and it represents our, the three major goals of student performance and success, of a caring and compassionate school culture, and of our premier workforce. So tonight's presentation on intervention will touch upon the highlighted priorities of our strategic plan. How do we develop a sense of what kids need, why they need it, and how we respond in a collaborative way? So some guiding beliefs around our student intervention team. So from here on out, I know we are great at sharing acronyms. You'll also often hear the acronym of SIT. And that means our Student Intervention Team, a group of collaborative problem solvers who come together and figure out what to do when kids are not meeting the expectations, either academic, behavioral, or social, that we might have for them, and how we get them there, because we know that they can do that. So we use the best strategies to figure out who's in need, what they need, and who are the experts around the table best to respond, and how we use data, how we follow up. And a huge part of this is the homeschool collaboration. And you'll hear from a quote from one of the Tooeen Hills parents about their experience with this process. So there's a very specific mindset that we bring to the table when we're talking about students and intervention. And we base our approaches on what's equitable. And to define what's equitable, in this instance, we mean not necessarily giving equal to every student, but giving kids what they need in order to be successful. We absolutely come with a collaborative mindset because we have different lenses of which we look at students and what they're showing us from a strengths-based model. And sometimes someone has that one nugget that could be the key to unlocking some success for a student. And then when we talk about our interventions, what's sustainable? Because that's really important, too. So with that, kind of setting the stage, I'm gonna turn it over to my former special education teacher, now language arts consultant, Cheryl Pager.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
This, this slide just speaks to our levels of instruction within any building and any instruction in Simsbury, and in many other buildings across the United States. But I'm just gonna briefly touch on that tier one is instruction for all kids. All kids access that tier one instruction in the classroom at all points, regardless of whatever tier that you were in. And tier one is meets 80% of the needs on average of all kids. So what do we do when we're not meeting their needs within that tier one approach? We certainly have a platter approach in reaching out to specialists and thinking about what are we gonna do differently in tier one before we move to intervention? But if we do need to move to intervention because we haven't met that child's needs, then we want to tier two, which means about 15% of kids in conjunction with tier one that are receiving some sort of tier two instruction. I believe last, your last meeting, you had some math conversations, and you had some experience with the Math Intervention Program, it's mainly about MIT. So MIT lives in tier two, SRIP, all of our acronyms, here we go. Mrs. Media Intervention Program lives in tier two. And we also have our SEL component in terms of behavior and social emotional needs in tier two, which our school psychologists and social workers help support. Despite some of our efforts, after a number of perhaps cycles in tier two, and really relooking at and refocusing some work, we likely would move to tier three. Now, when we're thinking about the student intervention team, we live somewhere in between tier two and tier three, right? Our goal is to come together if a student's not making progress, to be able to bring some people in, sit at the table, and really think about what's getting in the way for this learner in order to be able to grow them and bring them back down in tiers, because that is our goal, to bring them back down to tier one. I have to say, when you reported that on the platter, like I'm thinking about one little bug that I work with, that's that strengths-based approach, right? And he might be an intervention for something, but look at what he did in writing. So we're always looking at what kids do well in order to use those strengths to grow them forward. So who are we? And I want to say, too, that we are putting a little laser focus on Tooeen Hills. This work lives in every building. And the work is funneled down from, the work with Betsy Gonzalez, Director of Elementary Curriculum, and a team of people across districts. We have representatives from every single school that sit on what we call the SRBI team, scientific research-based interventions. We do have a lot of that. And we have representation from every building to look at it from every angle to make sure that what we're doing in buildings is consistent across districts in the best for kids.
So I know in the last presentation, it was asked around that, but are what we're seeing here at Central, or would we see similar kind of constructs and responses at Tooeen, at Latimer? And the answer was yes. Same thing with our student intervention teams, right? So these are practices that span across elementary schools. We want to be consistent in that, and the people around the table at each one of those buildings.
So if a student is not making progress, like I had said before, our goal was obviously to intervene at the tier one level, then these are representatives on a city in any given building across districts. The principal, physical psychologist, which for us is Michaela Alekandra, classroom teacher, which for us today is Mrs. Champagne, grade four. We have a primary and intermediate classroom representative who also comes to the table as a support for the classroom teacher. And to know that lens of level of instruction and needs, which is our kid Bruno, who's sitting back there, our special ed teacher. We have one special education teacher for each level, for primary, for the middle grades, and then for the upper grades. So they bring their expertise to the table and really thinking about what, like we're always wanting to bring back down in tiers, but we're also keeping that lens of what if, right? What if there is something going on that we need to make sure we're focusing on, and we're doing due diligence to all children? Language art consultant myself, and then of course, our math coach. So depending on when we determine it from the initial meeting pool and what is needed and determine, and we'll talk a little bit more in a minute, LAC and Math Coach might not always be a building at the table, right? Because it might be a math need, it might be an SEL need, so we watch, wait, and now. But that is our core SIT team, who comes together in the summer to plan for the year and think about who the kids, and then they come together, again, three times across the year in addition to the meetings that we attend to support children throughout the year.
So hi, everyone. My name's Michaela, and I'm the school psychologist at Tooeen. And this is actually my first year working as a school psychologist, and with the Simsbury Public Schools. And I have been so appreciative and learned so much through this process, as we really do follow a structured, consistent roadmap for identifying students' needs and how best to support them. So how does this process start? Will we all come to the table, and review the referral and the questions that we have about a student and their needs? And we also consider baseline data, what has already been done to help support this student. We then move to developing a hypothesis of what the lagging skill truly is. A lot of times, we come to the table with a lot of different questions in a lot of different areas, but through collaborating and consulting with one another, we're able to really pull in on what the true lagging skill is and develop a hypothesis on how best to support that skill. Through those conversations, we also collaborate to design an intervention plan. So across the different tiers, what does that look like at a tier one classroom level? What does that look like at a tier two or tier three level, with the different types of interventionists and service providers? We then develop a SMARTboard that is measurable and timely, and applies to what that lagging skill truly is. And we consider what our next steps will look like as each member of the team, and moving forward as part of that process. And then another piece of this, and I know Sue spoke to this previously, is communicating with the family at every step of the way along as part of this process. So before we come to the table, a lot of times, teachers will have already spoken to parents about what the concerns are and about who and their student to the student intervention team process. And then following our meeting, as I mentioned, we all have next steps, and teachers will be reaching out to communicate what that will look like for their student moving forward. And then the last step as part of this roadmap of the process is the team members reflect on what our pieces and responsibilities are as part of this process, and the students intervention are going to do for it.
So what we want to do now is give you a sample of some goals. We're gonna give you a sample of a social emotional learning goal if a kid is struggling with a particular skill there, and then a math goal, so you can get a sense of kind of what the team's put together.
Great. So one thing I really want to point out, too, is for whether it be a social emotional learning goal we're targeting or an academic goal, we really created this consistent type of hypothesis format, if you will, using words if, that, and so. And that has been wonderful in allowing this process to be consistent and to really hone in on what the need is and how best to support the students. So if this student was struggling academically, but when we really came together and talked about what she was presenting and strategies to try, we realized that it really was from an SEL lens, where we can support her, to help her functionally communicate her needs and utilize spoken strategies, which would then lead into her academic success and ability to access her academics. So we look at this process through a SMARTboard, which again, I said, is measurable through data, and we identified the lagging skill and how we were going to measure that across the different tiers in the different settings. So within a tier one intervention setting, the classroom teacher was doing whole class Google check-ins for emotional leveling, and this student was using a worry bubble, which was her strategy. And that was monitored through checking in on data and the analysis of the worry bubbles, and the teacher being able to communicate with her based on her worries and strategize on how best to deal with those feelings. And then at the tier two level, I was tasked to meet with this student and work with them in a small group setting to provide instruction on the lack of skill, and to really help her identify what strategy she can use in those moments, and how she can access the classroom when she is feeling, you know, feelings of worry and stress in those areas. And for a tier three intervention, some students might think that as well, and what that could look like through my lens would be more individualized setting for that program to teach, or increasing instruction or frequency, and so on and so forth.
So Michaela, at a previous presentation at Squadron Line, we saw a young lady who taught us to be the pond, right? And taught us an SEL strategy. I have to say, I don't know what a worry bubble is. And Mr. Sullivan was looking over at me like, is this worry bubble like a strategy that I should use? So.
You can read my mind.
We've worked together for a very long time.
So really, what the worry bubble is, it helps students, a lot of times, who have difficulties of functionally communicating their needs. It takes that internal feeling or emotion that they're experiencing, and allows them to write it down in a visual representation of a bubble. And it kind of represents it, them taking it out of their body, putting it onto a page, and then being able to better manage and cope with that feeling. And it allows other individuals, like teachers and service providers, to be able to understand what they're feeling inside, and help them to facilitate those top open strategies across the different tiers.
And I can speak to what it looks like in the classroom, because I've been in there with this particular child that has used the worry bubble. And it actually, it looks like a bubble, right, on paper? And she might get stuck in the moment and moving forward, and the teacher will come over and simply quit that worry bubble down in front of her, and she knows what her job is. And she'll pick up her pencil, she'll write down her worry, she'll fold it into little pieces, she'll hand it back to her teacher. The teacher will read it, she'll ask if she wants to talk about it. She says no, and off she goes back to her work. So it's literally taking weight out of her, off her shoulders, putting it onto the paper, and that's her way to communicate and be able to run and engage back into that aggregate task.
Every student has a tier one goal?
It was in student, in the, if we're talking about the student intervention?
I don't know, I'm going back to the triangle.
Yes.
Tier one, I thought was everybody. It wasn't like at a higher tier.
If you are in tier two or tier three, you are still in tier one. Right? You're still in the classroom, so a classroom teacher has a role in the application of whatever strategies might be happening in tier.
Does every student have a tier one?
Not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
Not necessarily. So if you recall last year, when we had Tooeen Hills talking about some of the social emotional learning strategies that they use, right, their check-ins, right?
Because I'm thinking of the smiley faces. That's what I'm remembering from last year.
That's your everybody, that's your tier one.
Okay.
And that is great for a good chunk of our kids. Then for students who need more or different, they might have an SEL goal.
Got it. So everyone is in tier one at least, but not everyone necessarily needs an intervention kind of like this.
Exactly.
Understood.
Correct. And this is lots of layers appealing back to get to this point, to create this hypothesis,
to figure out what was really the crux of what was getting in the way, because we had academic issues, right, reading, writing, and math, but if this is what the lighter part is coming back to. That's why the panel people at the table, and the conversation and collaboration that we have as a team, and that we celebrate a lot, and where we become, we're looking back at.
I know, as you've, as you've added all this social emotional learning, I know that this has been a real focus, have you noticed, I mean, and we've put kind of everybody into some sense of that, of that work, are you finding more opportunities to grab kids into the tier ones and tier twos because you see things, things are popping up that you wouldn't have noticed before?
I'll bet.
I'm sorry.
Psychologist speak to that. No?
Am I jumping ahead?
No, you're fine. Absolutely, Michaela, do you mind if I share? So I've just been online to clarify regarding the kind of universal implementation of tier ones. So again, good evening. My name is Mrs. Champagne, grade four teacher. And so I, along with all of my fellow elementary educators, we provide targeted instruction and priority standards in small groups. And so all learners are going to receive what they need from me. So all learners can achieve, for some learners, that might be that they're getting enrichment. And for other learners, and these are the ones that might be part of the SIT process, they have a lagging skill. There's a priority standard that they have not been successful at yet, either because I need to find a way along with my colleagues to help them access the curriculum, or move forward on the pathway to proficiency. And that certainly can look like a small group in how we take a brain break. So mindful breathing is something that we, you'll see in elementary classrooms. Learners will apply that because they practice it whole class. And if self-regulation is a challenge, that's something they've worked on me in a small, with me in a small group, not just reading, writing, or math.
Can I just ask, tier one and tier two, they start the same day? Yes, is that always?
That's really indicative of our meeting date cycle, in terms of the cycle that we might be in. So that, on February 24th, we met to think about what were our next steps for this, for this child. And our flow kind of goes, we review the hypothesis, does this still go with hypothesis we want to target? We look at the intervention in tier two, we back up into the classroom intervention, is it the right, is it the right support? Is this what we're still, does it match? And then we build that goal. So it's kind of a back point, you kind of circle back around. So that's why the dates are the same for this particular kiddo, because we build those three targeted interventions on that same day.
So you've already, so you, at this point, you already know tier one isn't enough? You need to do something more?
Yes, and she had already been in the tier two, right?
Okay.
So we have gone through a couple of cycles, whether four to six.
So this isn't like the first look at this child?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. It's, it's that top 5% of kids.
Yep.
When we're moving into that tier three, the top of that, that pyramid, that we're, this, we have, this is where we're having that conversation.
Okay.
Not until then, after we've done everything we can to keep and bring the kid back, bring the student back down, before we went up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I also have a question. So you mentioned that you bring together, you know, everyone's part of that collaboration, right? And the parent is part of that as well, right? Is the student part of that?
Can be. Absolutely. In the classroom level and bringing them into the, we have a lot of very focused conversations. And I, me, Sue knows me. I often say, let's not do this through the child, let's do this with the child, right? So where is the child at the center of this conversation? Where is their ownership and the understanding of what's going on around them? So yes, their voice is very much present. And I reflect on a conversation with Missy at the very beginning of this year. We had a little girl coming out of distance learning who didn't participate very much in that virtual experience. We knew she came back at the end of this, that last year. We knew we had a lot of work to do. And the first thing we did was sit with her when she came back from school and said, what's your worry? Like, what are you really good at and what are you really worried at? Worried about? And she crafted, like, we were so proud of her. Just she just had a voice. And we built her world and her education around her voice and what concerns were.
That's correct.
And that SEL is a part of it all.
Yeah. Excellent. So this is a math sample. So you can get a sense, I understand it's a really busy slide. So just to point out, that hypothesis is crucial. Right, so this person was struggling with geometric figures, angles. We had a very specific goal there. And then again, you'll see the classroom teacher had a role. Not the response we were hoping for. We get the math tutor involved. And then the math coach is going to take kind of another run at strategy and really teaching into this skill, right? So this can happen in any academic area, in a social emotional learning area. But at the end of the day, it's about what do we do when students aren't responding to instruction yet? And that word yet really signifies the growth mindset that the adults bring to the table of, hey, we're going to figure this out.
So maybe you're going to, okay. That, I was going to ask about numbers, so I'll wait.
Here you go.
I'll wait.
Great segue. Great segue.
Okay. So another little tag about areas marked first. We have nine current students in our student intervention process. We broke it down so for literacy, there are three, for math, two, and for social learning, four. We have serviced about seventeen students across the year through the SIT process. And we've had six dismissals and we brought in six more. Our dismissals from, from the SIT process in the areas of literacy and SEL have gone back down the tier. And then two of our kiddos have moved to a referral for special education.
So in other words, the students who were dismissed, the intervention that was put in place, they responded, they were showing great progress, back into tier one, right? And it doesn't mean that when you are in a tier two or tier three intervention that you're out of the classroom. That's not what it means, right? But you needed a different level of support. You responded, we're out. Now, some students, to Cheryl's point, moved to referral. That's kind of off the pyramid. We're saying, wow, not responding to a more intense intervention. Again, a more intense intervention. There might be a disability at play here. So those students were moved for evaluation purposes to rule out the evidence of a disability. That's really also what we're trying to do in this intervention.
When you say moved, you're still providing supports to them. It's not like you dumped them and said, okay, we're not doing anything else for you. We've moved you on. They're still getting what they had in their tiers, but they're, we're seeing if there's more. The next step, what's the next step?
And I think that's a really big question that we ask at the table all the time as a student team is, what are we doing for this child? Are we giving them exactly what they need? And are we still concerned that there's something else? Even though we're providing the instruction that is targeted to what they need, what there's something at, right? There could be appeal, like I said, but we're peeling back the layers of these children to really understand them, to make sure that we hit every mark with communication with parents and teachers, et cetera, along the way.
And some of these, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Some of these students have a real deficit in math, but they thrive in literacy. So they're tier one, they're regular classroom all the way, and they have this one piece that they're still trying to work out.
Yeah. And that's where, when I think about that last slide, and I know we're probably talking too much here.
No.
That tier three for math is really about backfilling the gaps, right? What are those primary or basic skills in math that are lacking? So that tier three comes in and it's off any curriculum, like it's maybe a fourth grader, you're filling in that third grade skill, right? While that tier two piece is supporting pre-teaching or clarity around what's going to be happening in the classroom.
And that speaks to our commitment to all learners' achievement. It's not, oh, we'll get to it next year in fifth grade. We have your kids. We are holding ourselves accountable. We analyze that data. We look to the learners when they examine, we examine their work. But we are closing that gap.
So the other question, though, that I have about this is how often, I mean, we talked about what's happening in, and then sometimes you're having to move them to referral. But how often is it that there are other resources that may be needed?
Do you mean like other interventions, Sharon?
Yes.
Like a math intervention or a reading intervention?
Or it could be social, social work or something else in it, external, external.
Do you want to speak to that team?
I would say, and I want to just back up to the efficacy of tier one. The vast majority of elementary learners respond to tier one. It never gets to a formal process. When we do have that process, I would say, given the expertise at the table, we're coming together with our colleagues, consultants, coaches, who have a wealth of knowledge and our other really exceptionally well-prepared professionals who bring a lens for that specific area of expertise like psychology. I would say that it is a rarity, and I can speak to almost twelve years of experience, it is a rarity that our team is not able to identify some stakeholder within our building, truly within our building, not just within our district, who can't fill that need. It is a rarity for a learner whose needs are differing to the point that an alternative learning program would need to be in place. That has usually already been identified prior to.
Can I see a question on the, you said there's, I think you said you've worked with seventeen kids this year, I think was the total number. Just curious, how does that compare to previous years? Really where I'm going with this, I'm just curious if you've seen a bump because of COVID, you know, the virtual learning, all of that. Just curious how that plays into it.
Great question. And when we came into this year, so this structure didn't really exist in our COVID year last year.
Okay.
We had some, certainly the resources in the building to be able to, without coaches and anyone not around, but using special education to have conversations to make sure that we were getting students and doing what we needed to at tier one, right? Those classroom teachers had resources to be able to put those pieces in place. I would say, I would go to the year before and our numbers that year were about twelve.
Okay.
So it's not much different, right?
No, great.
Well, I mean, when you think about our tiers of intervention, this is just it, right? So if you're thinking about kiddos in need for math, reading, and social emotional, we're hovering around the ten, eleven percent mark. And we're getting for kids who are actually in intervention, which is really not vastly different. I mean, with the eye and the lens on tariff, on SEL, like, we are definitely seeing, like, I would say that probably is much more targeted and probably a higher number than we've seen before. But it's because we have the lens on it.
Because you're watching.
Yep. Yep, exactly.
Do you have kids who are across maybe a little bit of support in each?
Yes.
And so, like, we learned about math, you kind of come in and out as you need it.
Yeah.
You have that ability to move them in and out depending on what you're learning or what they're learning and that you're teaching.
Sustainable.
Yeah. And then if they need it in two or three areas, you're providing all of that at whatever level they need it at.
A hundred percent. And I will say, most of the time, kids bubble up with one area of need when we come into the, like, we, that would be that block, right? So the kids, like, what's the priority? They bubble up and that's where they're targeted.
Usually a front runner need.
Exactly.
So, so you, but you would address all the, like you're saying, you see the whole child. So you're addressing whatever.
Right?
I was just going to say, I think a lot of times too, that areas of need go hand in hand. So if we come to the table and we identify the main lacking skill to be more academic in nature, but we're also seeing some SEL concerns, if we find a way to help increase their academic success through the tiers, then we're also going to see a positive effect for the SEL, vice versa. So I think that they do go hand in hand with that block.
So this is just another way to represent currently where we're seeing the needs. A little heavier on the social emotional pieces. I don't think that's surprising to anyone. And some, certainly some academic needs as well. And again, these are the students currently in the student intervention team process. So as we kind of wrap up here, Mrs. Belmonte had received some feedback, certainly from a new family, from a student, and from a grade one teacher. So here's the new family, I'm going to write it just in case you can't see it because the print's a little bit small. But the new family shared, our experience with the SIT team has been overwhelmingly positive. Our son hated school before we moved to Simsbury. His intervention team at Toon Hills enabled him to make astounding academic progress and, for the first time, feel good about himself at school. We feel like all bases are covered with the many specialties represented on this team. And they even consulted with his therapist and pediatrician. This has allowed us to see our son through the lens of possibilities instead of limitations. So that's a brand new family this year. A grade four student, Mrs. Pannard and Mrs. Martinson are the best. They helped me learn and my teacher's so proud of me. I'm not sure if that's one of Missy's kids, but I would be proud.
I am very proud.
You are, we know that. And then a grade one teacher, gathering experts from across the building to participate in the student intervention team is invaluable. This year, while listening to data collected in the classroom, reading intervention and math intervention, our school psychologists noticed a pattern across content areas. My student was struggling with confidence and did not know how to ask for help. By teaching the specific skill and targeting it, targeting it for reinforcement for the past six weeks, this student has improved her reading skills and is participating independently during writing instruction. This only happened because of the collaborative approach of the SIT process. And I think that speaks to what Michaela was just sharing. Sometimes it presents as one way, but it was really around, how do I ask for help? How do I access? How do I ask for help, know that I might be a little vulnerable, and still get what I need confidently? So, you know, in conclusion, it's really the power of the collective practice focusing on that classroom, knowing that there's fluid movement between tiers and interventions. And it's not a sentence that you're there forever, right? It's there, you get what you need, and you get back to where you need to be. But it's really emphasized, we emphasize that strong collaboration. And the process is important here. When do we look at data? How are we efficient? Because you have a lot of people around the table and we want them working with kids. So how do we work our process, look at our data, streamline what we do for kids so they can grow in the areas that we've identified and that we know that they can grow? So again, want to just thank this team at Toon Hills for all of the work that you continue to do for kids every single day. But, and again, I could say the same thing about the SIT process at Squadron or at Latimer. And that's the power of coming together under that teaching and learning team to really have some consistencies across schools so we can do great things for kids. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mr. Stowe.
It was great.
Great program.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I must admit, you know what? I thank you very much for this presentation. And if anything, I'm very impressed with the worry bubble. I broke that down. You know, something, that's something.
They might have a copy for us all. I think they should send us all copies.
More than channel assembly, right?
Right, absolutely. I really, I really feel that I could, I could benefit from that.
We could all use a worry bubble. We could all use a direct speech. Thank you, Strahm. All right, so on to school counseling.
Mr. Stowman.
Here we go. Our director of school counseling. Come on up, Mr. Stowman.
Is no intermission?
No. That was it, from that tier. That was your intervention.
How do you feel about that? Did you get arrested?
We're really excited to have Greg here with us. Certainly Greg has presented before and this year in his inaugural year in this role as the Director of School Counselor. How long have you been a school counselor at Simsbury High?
My nineteenth year here at Simsbury. One year in Westover.
We will count that. We have to count that.
You have an internship year at Simsbury.
And an internship.
They may cancel to learn.
That's it.
It's implicit.
That's it. So I'm going to hand it over to Greg and he's going to share with us the school counseling program offerings, what school counselors have been focused on over the course of this past year and where they have their eyes on for the future. I'm also going to hand you the power of the advanced.
Wow.
Wow, she doesn't let anybody do that.
That's right.
Doesn't even let me do that.
She doesn't trust you, Mia.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you for having me and allowing me to speak about our counseling program at Simsbury High School, and Henry James. This is our team up here. Some new faces and familiar faces in new places. You'll see at the high school, which is on the left, Chris Hall was a new hire. He worked the past, I think, eight years at Henry James and came up and took my spot as I moved into Jay Allen Perry's spot. Sarah Blair was in the top right corner. She was also a new hire. Took over Sandy Valaro, who retired. And then sitting in the middle, not with a white shirt, but the one next to her, that's Heather Rose. She is a new administrative assistant that we hired this year. So three new people at the high school level. And then Henry James over on the right, when Chris Hall moved up to the high school, we hired Jackie Santiago. She is one over from the left. She was a behavioral coach there for several years and stepped in very nicely into the role of counselor. And then over on the right, we have an intern at Henry James, Victoria Derrick. She's been with us, she works about three to four days a week. And has been a good addition to the team down there. So what I want to do first, just kind of go over some of the roles and responsibilities, both at the high school and then at Henry James and what we do. Just so you know, the setup of the, how we do it in the high school, we have counselors work with students at each grade level. There's other models out there that we've explored over the years. But we feel that being able to work with students over the course of four years really builds a good relationship with the students. And relationship is the core of what we do. The better relationships you have with students and families, I think the better services we can provide. We do a lot of individual and group counseling. Our goal is to provide equal opportunities for every student in the building. And what we try to do is meet with every student individually at least once throughout the year. Most students will meet with more than once. And we'll also do several different group counseling sessions with students. Call those developmental counseling lessons. You can see what we do in the fall, winter, and spring. The fall, really the focus in the fall is on freshman orientation and getting them ready for the high school, making sure they get off to a good start. And we also focus on our seniors and the application process and making sure that they have what they need to apply to colleges or pursue other post-high school opportunities. During the winter, we focus our attention shift to the juniors. What we do with the juniors, we have, we have these post-high school planning meetings with all of our juniors where we'll meet with the junior. The juniors will have a meeting with their counselor and we'll invite the parents in. So it is an individualized meeting. and we'll invite the parents in, uh, so it's an individualized uh, meeting. Uh, everybody's on the same page as they start looking at their post-high school options. The past couple of years, uh, we moved from having the parents in to having the parents virtually meet with us. Uh, and some of the parents, I think, like the convenience of that, where they can be at work or be at home, uh, and, and still get into that meeting without having to leave and, and get to the school. We also start working with sophomores. Uh, we just did this a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we did a career lesson with our sophomores, uh, kind of talking to them about um, really how interests, values, and skills kind of come together when you're looking at, at careers that are out there. So um, it's not about telling our sophomores what they're gonna do down the road, but getting them to understand what, what kind of goes into um, how you choose a career. Uh, in the spring, we're trying to wrap up really uh, our students' year, uh, making sure that they finish strong. Uh, any students that are struggling, we're making sure that we're um, seeing them all to the finish line. Uh, but we'll also be planning for the following year, uh, getting their course selection um, all set and making sure that the courses that they want to take for next year are locked in. You'll see at the bottom there, uh, our counselors are involved in a lot of meetings throughout the course of the year, uh, in consultation with administration, um, teachers, parents, outside professionals, uh, really just trying to do what's best to try to help our struggling students, give them the support that they need. You'll notice uh, the SIT is up there as well. We talked a lot about, you know, how the student intervention team plays an important role at the elementary level. Uh, we have it at the, at Henry James and at the high school level as well. At Henry James, we have a similar setup to what we have at the high school, where the counselor will work with students of both seventh and eighth grade, and we'll divide them up. Um, again, individual and group counseling. One of the differences that you see at Henry James, you see a lot more of what's called restorative practices. There's a little bit more behavior uh, issues at the middle school, just kind of that, that's the nature of that age group, um, where the counselor will work with those students, um, to really develop some uh, behavior plans. Uh, they'll do some peer mediation. They'll work with those students to try to um, really work with those behaviors and try to, try to work with them to improve those behaviors through the course of the year. Um, you know, we only have-
Conflict resolution.
Conflict resolution.
Huge.
Yep. You know, we only have one uh, one principal, one assistant principal there, so the, the school counselors really step in uh, a lot more at the, at the Henry James level, uh, with those, with those discipline, and um, really trying to help the students grow. Um, developmental counseling lessons down at the middle school, they'll push into classrooms, um, throughout the course of the year, and they'll work with um, stress management, social skills, uh, learning strategies. They'll do some career exploration, um, kind of geared more towards the middle school age, um, and, and really work with students. And the reason we do that is that's a way you can get in and, and do similar lessons with a bigger number of students. So um, it works at, at both levels to be able to, to give everybody kind of the same experience um, throughout their uh, seven through twelve development. Uh, and again, you'll see um, at the middle school level, a lot of different meetings that they'll go to as well to try to help, help the students that, that might be struggling. So in two thousand twenty, uh, state of Connecticut updated their comprehensive school counseling framework. Um, and we'll get into too much detail here. We're still, uh, as a department, trying to figure out, you know, how best we can utilize the new framework. Um, but you can see some of the themes, domains, and components of the framework. The middle there, the, the, the three framework domains, um, as we look at this seven through twelve, we feel like we do a really good job working with students on academics. There's a big focus on trying to help them academically uh, maneuver through, through their, their middle school and high school career. There's been a lot of emphasis lately on social emotional in the last couple of years. Uh, and the career component is an area that we really want to focus on going forward, uh, and try to improve um, what we do in, in the career donation. And I'll talk a little bit about that later. But really, it's about identifying, you know, what, what we want to do um, that, that matches up with what the Connecticut framework says that we should be doing, uh, and then figuring out how to best deliver those services to our students. This is a slide that I showed back when you presented uh, in October, uh, and I just want to kind of reiterate the good work that, that we as counselors and, and our teachers are doing and our administration is doing um, at the, at the high school level. In, in two areas. Number one is really trying to get our kids uh, to challenge themselves and, and take high-level courses. Uh, and, and we feel like that helps prepare them for life after high school. And you'll see that seventy-six percent of our, our seniors, uh, from last year, completed at least one AP course before graduation. Uh, and they're not just taking the course, they're doing really well in those courses and on the tests, um, that are, are given at the end of the, the AP courses. You also see that our students are not only going to college, uh, they're getting accepted to tier one colleges at a high rate. Uh, and when they go to college, um, their success in college uh, is measured by, are they graduating and getting a college degree within six years of graduation? Uh, and those numbers are very strong.
I have a question. So going back on the college success rates on the second bullet, eighty percent of students attending four-year, seven point four percent of students pursuing two-year, and then the remainder of that percentage of students-
Some go into the military, some just go into career, um, you know, the career field. Some may take a gap year, take a year off, and then uh, end up going into uh, to four-year, two-year schools. You know, I think, I, I think some students made that choice the past year, not knowing the uncertainty of what college is gonna look like during the pandemic. So I think uh, we had some students that, that consciously took a gap year or, or just worked for a year, uh, before heading off to college.
Do we have um, do we have a good relationship with any of the vocational schools that, so the kids who may be the four-year and, or the two-year aren't quite right? That we're giving them options?
Yeah, yeah, we usually have Lincoln Tech come in, um, and they have a great program, a lot of, a lot of trades, and uh, they'll come in and meet with students that are interested. Um, we've had kids go to Bristol Tech, which has a post-grad uh, program as well. Water Chester's another one, um, so.
So kids who might have that interest, rather to work with their hands or something along those lines, we're providing them options as well?
And culinary too.
Yep.
Right, in any way, working with their hands, yeah.
Yep. I, so I wanted to share with you some of the areas of focus that we had uh, here in this, this school year. The emphasis from the get-go is really providing social emotional support for our students. Um, we'll return to in-person learning. Um, that was gonna be a focus uh, from the get-go. We started over the summer. Uh, all the students that were full-time distance learning the previous school year, we invited in both at Henry James and at the high school, um, to take a tour of the school, because a lot of them hadn't even been in the high school yet or been in the, in the middle school yet. So we had the meeting counselors, take a tour of the school, um, and, and just try to hopefully help them um, adjust before the first day of school to see what, what the school year, uh, what the, what the school building was all about. Even those students that didn't attend, we had our stu, our counselors follow up with them, uh, within the first few weeks of the school year, um, to make sure that their adjustment uh, back to school was, was a good one. Support student transitions. Uh, high school had an adjustment to a new schedule. For those of you that, that don't know, we, we switched to a schedule that we've had for about uh, ten to twelve years and into a new one where we call it the eight drop two, um, and where you have eight periods, but you have only six periods in a day, uh, and they rotate the morning and the afternoon. And I think in the beginning, it was an adjustment for a lot of people, um, and students in particular, but from what we've heard lately, a lot of students have adjusted and, and they like some of the, the benefits of, of the new schedule. Henry James really has a lot of transitions. Um, they are taking the sixth graders and transitioning them to seventh grade, um, and before long, they're transitioning the eighth graders and getting them ready for high school. Um, they also had uh, over fifty new students uh, move into town and, and join the Henry James community. Uh, so that's an adjustment, uh, in addition to obviously the students coming back to, to full-time learning. The next few bullets are specific to high school. Um, one of the focus areas we had was expand the UConn Early College Experience Program. For those of you that aren't aware of this, uh, there's a program through UConn where schools can set up high school classes that you can take in high school and earn credit at UConn for taking those classes. Uh, the teachers who teach those classes, um, have to go through a, a training program and get certified by the University of Connecticut to teach those classes. Um, so we have had several classes, uh, AP English senior year, uh, Individual Family Development. We have a drawing class, and we have a Latin and Latino Studies class. The past few years, we've had this going for, for years, and we usually get one or two students a year that take advantage of this program. Uh, and talking with Sue at the beginning of the year, it was something that, that we wanted to try to uh, just expand and just give students and families more information about the program. So we did that, went into classrooms, to all those classrooms, and talked to the students about the benefits of the program. Uh, didn't force it on anybody, but just, just kind of explained to them, uh, what they can get out of that program. Uh, we s, uh, sent messages home to parents to explain to them as well. Uh, and this year, we had twenty-seven students, um, do the, do the program. Uh, and we actually got uh, recognized by University of Connecticut as being the school with the highest percentage increase of students uh, doing the UConn ECE program.
Do we have teachers in the building that teach it? Because I know my daughter took it, and there was, there was um, somebody there for the personal development, uh, or the child development.
Yep, yep. Yeah, the teachers at our school have to be certified to, to teach it.
Very true.
And we actually have-
So it's in-person, not virtual with UConn? It's an in-person class?
So you're actually taking the child development class with, you might be taking with two students that aren't doing it for UConn credit, um, but you sign up for it, and you pay a little money for it, and you, you can get the, the UConn credit.
As a teacher by content, there are different requirements based upon content, like different thresholds that they expect you, because you are an extension of UConn, right? So they want to put their SEL approval. You have to share with them, what's your course outline? What's your syllabus? And then they say, yes, approved, or needs a little bit more work. So it's-
So you're aligning with their course?
Yes. So-
You're aligning with the expectations that they have.
Yeah. Uh, one of the reasons I really like the UConn ECE program is that it provides access for students who may not be ready to take an AP class or may not want to take an AP class. It gives them an opportunity to take a college-level class without that AP rigor. So that's number one. Number two is, in order to get college credit from taking an AP class, you have to do well on the AP exam. You can go through the whole year, do well in the AP class, but then you score one or two on the exam, and that college may not accept credit. The UConn ECE program, if you, it's all based on the grade you get in the class. So if you get a B in the class, you add now have a B on your UConn transcript. That is, that transcript will get you credit at UConn, but it's also transferable at a lot of colleges, um, around the, around the nation.
And Greg is committed to following up with students that have participated in ECE, to hear about their experience and to say, you know, how did it go? Do we have to make some adjustments on our end? So that's something that we brought forth to curriculum committee, and certainly will follow up with members of the curriculum committee about how that actually panned out for our kids.
And we have two, two new classes being added, one for next year. Uh, ECEables doing a music theory class that will be an ECE class. And then in two years, uh, we're trying to get an Asian Studies class going as well. There'll be an English class. Alex mentioned it early. Tomorrow, we are doing a SAT Digital Administration. Uh, the whole state of Connecticut is moving this way for the in-school SAT that we've been doing for the last ten or so years. Uh, it will be a digital administration for all state of Connecticut public schools. The SAT that is still given on Saturdays will still be a paper and pencil test, um, up until two thousand twenty-four, when it's all gonna, uh, the plan is to all go digital. So it's a new thing for us. However, our students have taken the S back digitally, so they do have some familiarity with taking a standardized test digitally on their Chromebooks. Um, but we are uh, excited to see how it goes tomorrow. Um, and we'll let you know. Uh, another focus of our counseling department is intended to increase the diversity of students, uh, in our AP courses. Uh, one of our counselors, Manatonic Wunusi, kind of took this on as a project, um, and, and looking at the students who have been taking AP classes and trying to uh, in, in increase the number. Uh, we have a lot of very talented and very bright, uh, and very capable students of color, uh, who we feel can do very well in AP classes, and we're trying to identify those students and based on past performance in classes, uh, and with the help of teachers and counselors, uh, really trying to encourage students to, to challenge themselves, uh, and, and try to take some AP classes. You're probably aware by now that we are implementing a, implementing a capstone program. Uh, this is another requirement of the state of Connecticut with the new graduation requirements, to have some sort of mastery-based experience for, for high school students. And uh, we have chosen, like a lot of schools have chosen to, to implement a capstone program. Uh, this has been spearheaded by our capstone coordinator, Liz McKay, uh, who's done a phenomenal job. I believe it will be one of the top capstone programs in the state of Connecticut, uh, given the amount of work that she's put into it, uh, the teachers who are gonna be uh, helping with it. Uh, I just think it's gonna be fantastic. Um, and we, we just believe in the program. We think it's gonna build our, build on our students' interests uh, and help them learn skills that are gonna benefit them, uh, both in their college lives and their, and their professional lives. Uh, lastly, uh, talking about the new state standards, uh, we've been working both uh, at, at the high school and the middle school to redesign some of our school lessons. Number one, to align them with the new state standards. Uh, but also number two is, we're trying to make our lessons a little more interactive. Uh, we keep asking ourselves, is this gonna be meaningful for the students? We don't just want to do it because we're supposed to do it. We actually want to do lessons where when we talk about it later in the year with students, or talk about it next year with students, they actually remember, um, the lessons that we did and, and make it a little more meaningful. Uh, and we've had the kids a little more interactive with them, where we're not just lecturing and telling them about careers. We're having them explore careers and, and work with each other to, to, to turn the talk, and I think they, our lessons are improving, um, this year. So we're gonna keep working on that. As in all walks of life, uh, the past two years have certainly brought on a share of challenges. Um, one of the major challenges that we have seen, uh, has been the increase in social emotional concerns at all levels. Uh, and we've seen those manifest in behaviors, uh, anxiety, depression, uh, attendance. Uh, and those are certainly, has been a big focus of our, our counseling department and our administration and teachers in trying to help, help students, uh, maneuver, uh, their way through a difficult time.
What are, what are these numbers?
So I'll, I'll, I'll explain those, those numbers. Um, we've seen an increase in behavior issues, uh, especially at Henry James. Uh, our counselor, one of our counselors said that students are having a hard time learning how to tolerate each other again. You know, they were, they were home, um, for a while, uh, then they were in the hybrid learning, where they're only going to school two days a week. They were kind of separated from each other, and now everybody's kind of back in the building and, um, and they're, they're all, they're on top of each other again. And, you know, I think, uh, as, as my, my colleague put it, they, they are, they're trying to learn how to tolerate each other again. And, and sometimes that comes out in behavior, uh, issues, and again, uh, the, the administration and the counselors are working with those students, um, not so much in a disciplinary way, but in a peer mediation, conflict resolution type of way.
Middle school's always a really fun time developmentally, because they're trying to figure out-
Regardless of everything, yeah, right?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, attendance has been an issue as well. Again, I think as many students struggle to maintain the stamina of returning to full-time education, um, counselors have been working with administration, uh, develop plans both systematically and individually to help students, um, as, as we deal with this as well. Um, the numbers there, what that shows you, uh, is that there's been an increased number of 504 students, uh, post-COVID. Uh, if you're not familiar with, with 504 plan, 504 plan is an accommodation plan, um, when students have a documented disability, uh, we can create a, a 504 plan, which is an accommodation plan, um, that gives students some supports, some accommodations in the classroom to help them maximize, um, their potential.
So they don't require specialized services?
Right.
Right? Section 504 is a section of the American With Disabilities Act. So they may need some accommodations to address their disabilities, but not necessarily specialized instruction through, uh, special education?
So the numbers went- They went up significantly. So you can see-
When, when we were-
So in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, we had ninety-eight students in, in Simsbury High School with a, with a 504 plan. So in 2019, 2020, we had 98 students in Simsbury High School with a 504 plan. And that could be anxiety, it could be depression, it could be a medical disability, it could be ADHD. So there's a variety of reasons why someone could have a 504 plan. So that was the year that we led into COVID. And then last year, the numbers went up to 143 504 students at Simsbury High School, 63 at Henry James. And we're about the same this year. Though, again, those can be all different reasons. However, within that, we have seen an increase of students with documented anxiety and depression as well. So, you know, and I think that is, it's not just something that is affecting students, it's affecting adults. And something that we are working on, again, as a school, to try to support.
So Greg, certainly a student component need there, but as well administratively for your staff who facilitates those meetings. It's increase in times, right? In terms of expectations and management and how to get to those things and be productive and communicate and.
So, yeah, so.
Right.
A 504 student does not have a special education teacher.
Right.
The case manager of the 504 student is the school counselor. So when you add, you have this additional number of students, these students, you know, sometimes a student with anxiety may come into the counseling office and may spend a couple hours there, you know, as the counselor works to try to, you know, calm them down and reassure them and work with them on coping skills before they can send them back to the classroom. So it does take a time, it does take time, but the time is, you know, Sue doesn't need that time.
And they come at multiple times a week too. I mean, this is when you're in the middle of it, I would imagine.
Our school counselors also work very closely with Dr. Kathy Ernst. So she's one of our school psychologists and we've, she's actually in close proximity, like physical proximity, to the school counseling office. And that's purposeful, right? So she's an expert in disabilities, certainly. She helps to be that phone a friend, that additional expert to address some of the mental health concerns. And this is another kind of leg of some of the challenges we presented to you through the budgetary supports that we asked about, right? This is another component of that story relative to mental health.
Right. But that's what I was getting ready to say. I mean, it's been accounted for in that conversation.
That's right.
How many people, I mean, compared to the state level? I mean, do we have numbers that compares to state? I mean, are we on par with the state levels that are going up or are we ahead or behind? Or do we know any of that?
We're, I mean, that's about 10%, over, a little over 10% of our population at the high school has a 504 plan. And I think I want to say about 5, 5 to 7% is probably.
Yeah, I think it's, I, when talking with my colleagues, everyone's seeing an uptick. Right? We're seeing an uptick in incident rate of special education. We're seeing an uptick of mental health concerns that are manifested through section 504 plans.
Could that number for this year continue to grow?
Yes, it fluctuates. It could grow, someone could be dismissed, it could go down. It probably, it grows more than it goes down throughout the course of a school year. But we also will have, you have an annual 504 meeting with, with the family and student and educators. And you can decide to dismiss, you can decide to, you know, sometimes refer to special education. So it could go in different directions. These things tend to attract different events during the year as well, college deadline or anything like that.
Acceptance, stress, yeah.
I mean, certainly, certainly anxiety and stress definitely can come, can get higher at different parts of the year, yes. It doesn't necessarily correlate to when we add them to 504 plan, but there are definitely certain times of the year that are more challenging.
How many students does each counselor have?
So we're, we're about 180 to 185.
Same at Henry James?
No, Henry James is about 250 to, Sarah Mahner, who is our coordinator, takes a little bit less. So she might be around 200 and it's about 250 to 275 for the others.
Not that high. It's not, but it's over 200.
Yeah.
So they have a higher caseload than the high school does definitely. Because you're split between three counselors.
And we have an adequate supply there that, like, I'm sure a lot of ours go to kids who have like 504s or IPs or whatever. The, but for students, like you said at that first slide, that you're, the student counselor will try to meet with each student at every level, every grade. And is that, I have not experienced that. And so I was just curious, like, is that, is that some quantified? Like, do you have notes on stuff like that? Like, do, are the counselors responsible or held accountable somehow for those meetings? And is that even reasonable with that amount of kids?
It is easier to do at the high school because of the counselor ratio. The middle school makes an effort to. We don't quantify, we don't check boxes of those meetings, but it is, it is the goal to meet with every student individually. Definitely, we definitely do it from the group setting. And that's one, again, one reason we do the groups is to make sure you have those contacts with the students. So where do we go from here? Our future, future focus areas. This year, we feel, has been a lot of reactive counseling, a lot of handling situations as they come up. And, you know, if you go to the middle school, the day starts a lot of times with kids getting off the bus, very emotional and going into the counseling office. We're going to try, we want to go forward, be more proactive with our supports and with our strategies so that we get ahead of it as best as we can. I think this starts by focusing on first-year students at each building. So that's the seventh and ninth graders. At Simsbury High School, we want to improve our freshman orientation program. Two years ago, we were able to have a day, two or three years ago, we had the first, or three years ago, I think, we had the first day of school, we just had the freshmen in. And they got to walk around the building and have a day by themselves before everybody else came in. And we've been floating around the idea of trying to be able to do that maybe the day before we start school. On one of our teacher in-service days, Tuesday, have it a couple hours where we bring the freshmen in and just have them go through their schedule for about, you know, five minutes of class and just meet their teachers, see who's in their class, see who's in their lunches and just feel good about coming to school the next day that they had a day without all the sophomores, juniors, and seniors in there. So there's some cases we got to work out about that. That's something that we would like to do for next year.
That would be a great idea, personally.
We have a vision for a freshman seminar, which would basically be, when most freshmen have a study hall, we encourage all freshmen to have a study hall, some don't, but most of them have a study hall. We want to create this seminar program where counselors, other support people, we have, a freshman assistant principal, where we can go in and meet with our freshmen bi-weekly, a couple times a month, and get in there and do some lessons with them around coping strategies, lessons around study habits, organization, executive functioning, and really just, you know, we don't want to take away their study hall because they're going to need that to do their work as well. But again, it just gives, if we can get ahead of it and teach them some skills as freshmen right off the bat, we think that'll help long-term. And it'll also, the more our counselors see our students early, I think it's going to build those relationships and then make them more comfortable to work with the counselors down the road.
Greg, can I ask you a question? I'm still stuck on the 504 numbers. And you talked about the relationship, don't you? How, how does a 504 plan come about? I mean, do you, this is going to sound the way I mean it to be. You're not just sitting in your office waiting for a student to come to you. How do you know someone needs those kinds of services?
So, that's a good question. Sometimes it comes out of the sit process that they kind of talked about at the Toon Hills, where it might come from elementary, middle school, high school, where a student's struggling. And you're trying to identify why the student's struggling and you're trying the tier-one interventions, you're trying some tier-two interventions. And then you might decide that you want to go to a PPT, have a meeting, maybe do some testing and determine whether a student might qualify, might have a disability, might qualify for special education, or might just need accommodations through a section 504 plan. You also sometimes get it from the other end where a parent is concerned about their son or daughter. They might take them to see their pediatrician, they might take them for testing on the outside and may come to you and say, we had our son or daughter tested, they tested positive, they tested for ADHD.
They tested positive. Don't get it, don't get it. They're two separate issues.
They have diagnosed anxiety from their pediatrician or therapist.
Yes.
And then again, we'll take a look at, does that, does that disability, is it impacting major life activities? Is it impacting their learning? Is it impacting, you know, how they function socially? And then make a determination as a team, do, are we going to qualify them for a 504 plan? Are we going to refer them to special education? Or can we still manage without a, without a plan?
And sometimes it comes up when we are going about our daily practices and through school counseling of who's coming in our, like, who haven't we seen in a bit? Who's experiencing some attendance concerns? What's going on there, right? So it might be pick up off the phone to talk to a teacher, to speak with the parent, to kind of problem solve. So they don't just usually pop up, there's some kind of history of concern. That may translate into a 504 plan, it may not. But it's about, again, getting kids what they need so they can access what the school is offering.
And doing it early so that you can hopefully work them through it and get them out of the 504. I mean, isn't that always kind of the theory on 504 is that you want to graduate them out?
Yeah, that is the goal, yes.
But at the end of the day, like, we've seen an increase in mental health issues. The depression and anxiety, I mean, we look at those numbers, where do students, and there's other things that fall in there too, right? There could be more temporary medical conditions where a student needs specific accommodations, right? So there's that fluidity there, but we have seen an increase in the mental health concerns, specifically in that require accommodations.
As I mentioned, that freshman seminar idea, we've also talked about it at the seventh grade level as well, and making sure that when they're transitioning to the middle school, you know, that's a big change, you know, from having one or two teachers to having five, six teachers and working with those students on organization and executive functioning and, again, coping skills and, you know, again, teaching how to tolerate other people before, you know, it's doing. So we're talking about that at the seventh grade level as well. During COVID, we ran a college fair for years. We ran programs like mock admissions, a program called Campus Connections where we had college representatives come in and talk to families about the college process. And we didn't, we haven't done that the last two years because of COVID and we want to revitalize those programs and get them back in the next couple of years so that we provide that, it's just great information for, for our families and students as they, as they look for post-secondary options. I mentioned earlier wanting to improve the career component of our curriculum. You know, I'm excited to work with Liz McKay. I think this goes hand in hand with Capstone. You know, as you're looking at the Capstone, you're looking at what are students' interests? What do they want to pursue? What do they want to learn more about that for a lot of these students is going to be something that they want to learn post-high school. You know, I'd love to build our internship program. That's something that, you know, would be great to build up. It'll certainly help with the Capstone, but it'll just help, help our students in general. And just having, having people from the community come in and talk about different careers and having those, you know, having those opportunities, I'd like to get back to that. So, you know, I think Liz will be somebody that we'll be able to work with and try to revitalize that as well.
Greg, are we, are the guidance counselors at Henry James working? We've talked a lot about using the clusters at the high school as a pipeline for a Capstone. Are we doing a better job maybe of making sure these kids know when they're picking their courses, have a better feel for what those long-term clusters might look like? And are we also giving them, I guess, the permission to say, this one didn't work for me, I have to try another one?
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good question. So we've talked about that, about, you know, some of the students who, you know, they get to junior year and they're like, oh, I wish that I had known that this was, I could have done this for Capstone or that. So making sure, it's that balance of, you know, kids in seventh and eighth grade and you're already talking about what they're doing senior year, what they're doing for college. And in some ways, it's like, oh, it's too early. But in other ways, it's like, no, it's just, it's information. And if it can help them plan, then it's not a bad thing, so.
But to do without adding stress is the key.
Exactly.
Right, like, can you just talk about these fun clusters at the high school that might feed your interests?
Right. And I think what Liz has done is, we've created these, you know, we have the Project Lead the Way Engineering and the Project Lead the Way Biomed and Architecture where if you get in there right away freshman year and then love it and stick with it for four years, well, then that's going to be your Capstone class senior year.
Right.
But she's also created this SHS Capstone class for those students that don't necessarily, they didn't start in Biomed and do it for four years. So they, they wanted to take multiple different electives and kind of test the waters and, you know, they might not have found something that they could stick with in the clusters for four years, but then they can get to senior year and still do, yeah, I have a student who's interested in oceanography and, you know, now he can, senior year, create his own program through SHS Capstone to do something related to oceanography.
That's great.
You know, and that allows that flexibility for those students that may not have decided in seventh grade what they, what they wanted to do.
That has to be a big percentage.
That has to be there.
That has to be a big percentage.
Because I know that, you know, for years we talked about, like, you get in and I had kids who at one point or another tried to make that pivot and then didn't really have that foundation. And so, thank God, they didn't have to do Capstone, although I think it could have been a great thing, but, but I think that that was always tricky for them to feel like they have the opt-out of a cluster to be able to opt into another.
Sure, yeah. Because there's some value to that too.
Oh, yeah.
Taking a business class and then taking a culinary class and taking an engineering class and.
Try them all.
Try them all.
Right, I think that's great.
A well-rounded cluster.
Exactly.
Yeah, so there's value in both of that. The bullet about remote learning, that just came to us about a month ago from the state of Connecticut that they, you know, obviously with COVID, all of a sudden, remote learning became something that reached the K through 12 level. It used to be something that was kind of only thought about on the college level. And now, you know, you have remote learning options at the high school, middle school, and elementary level. So the state of Connecticut trying to get ahead of things has created these standards where if you're going to do remote learning options, here are some standards around that. So we're just getting started with that, but we're going to meet at some small committees and try to find out more about that. But I think, you know, obviously we're back to full-time learning, but I still think there's, there's a place for online learning to supplement education. So, you know, we'll kind of see where that fits in. And then lastly, just the formalizing of our curriculum, I kind of talked about kind of redesigning our curriculum. EduPlanet is something that the whole district is using, that each department is kind of putting their curriculum up on this web-based program so that it can be accessed, it can be constantly changed because it's digital, but it also can be accessed by anybody who wants to see it. So we're going to be working on that in the next couple of years of, as we redesign our curriculum, actually putting it up onto EduPlanet. Thank you very much for your time. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah. I appreciate the bullet about revitalizing the post-secondary options and I, I understand the question I'm about to ask you, especially with a caseload of 185, I think you said, coming off of a pandemic. But the one opportunity that I've heard consistently is, is that process that we, they wish, parents wish that that process would be a little strength thing. So, I mean, I, you know, the college fairs are great, you know, the career days are great, but, you know, if I know, if I'm just going to Yale, Harvard, and, you know, all the other schools I should not be applying to, you know, that's a problem, right? So could you just speak a little bit about how you're going to help the student and really family too, right? About really focusing in on the school or the post-secondary career?
Sure.
Instead of just saying, okay, here's, here's the, here's the universe, have that kind of thing.
We talked a lot, right, about the kids in the middle.
Yep.
Right? And so can you speak to some of your ideas?
Sure. I mean, we try to get. Sure. I mean, we we try to give. I think it was about ten years ago, we actually, we used to do these junior group meetings and we used to meet with the kids. And you were just talking in general terms, we're getting specific with each student. So we we said, let's go to an individual meeting with every junior, starting in January of their junior year, and let's invite the parents in. So we could individualize that conversation. So if that conversation is the student saying, I don't want to go to college. Like, I want to, I I want to go and work as an electrician. Well, now you can steer that direction, steer them in that direction and talk about the options that are there and and really make it an individualized for that that student, that parent and kind of kind of lead them along. If they, you know, they want to go to college down south, well, I don't know if you're familiar with our Anavians college program, which allows them to do searches of schools down south that have specific majors and size of school. And you can then take that list and and the counselor can talk to that student and family about, you know, where they fit in based on their GPA, SAT scores and what makes it a realistic school, what makes it, you know, a reach school and talk through that process. Then, you know, we have that meeting and then, you know, we kind of send students on their way. And and the the spring is a great time to go visit schools. And, you know, April vacation is a great time to go visit schools. So a lot of kids and families will go and and explore. And then we will try to get to them again before the summer, the students, and kind of see where they're at with the process, if they're, you know, dragging their feet. That's a different story than if, you know, nope, I saw these five schools, I feel good about this. You know, what what do I have to do for letters of recommendation? So we kind of take them through, you know, what they that need to do going into the summer. And then when they come back from the summer, we have a meeting with all of our seniors in small groups to kind of talk about the application process. And then again, we meet with every senior individually to, again, where are you at? You know, what's your process look like? Some some students are, they're not ready to apply until January or February. Other students are ready to apply soon as September first is. So, you know, it has become an individualized process with those with those students.
Thanks.
So along the same line though, I'm assuming that we have things in place like, you know, readiness checklist and stuff for juniors and seniors?
Yes.
That go out to them so that they can start thinking in advance.
Yeah, we actually, all of our counselors now have Google Classroom pages. You know, the teachers went that direction, so we said, let's do it as counselors. So we have, every counselor has a, you know, class of two thousand twenty-three Google Classroom, class of two thousand twenty-four Google Classroom. So on there, they can also post, you know, juniors, this is the right time to be asking for a teacher letter recommendation. Here's how you go about doing it, you know, here's who you might want to consider. And then again, if you have any questions, come see me. So that's one way that we can get that information out to all the students as well. And again, from freshman year on, really. You know, it's 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 again, it's a balance of not trying to overload the students.
Right.
Because they get a lot of emails coming from Google Classroom from all their teachers and.
But still want to make sure that they're prepared.
Yep.
Greg, how about overloading your team? I mean, do you have the resources you need during those crunch times to get the forms into schools to get? That's a lot of work kind of, you know, is going to happen, but always happens. Do you have the right resources to deal with that in the time pressures of deadlines?
Yes, I mean, we get it done.
That's not the right answer.
I think you would always want more resources.
I understand. I'm asking you a question in the audience that I asked you.
Right.
No, but I mean, is it is it difficult with resources that you have with some of the deadlines? That are, people were very concerned about any of the deadlines.
You know, we talked, I started by, you know, you asked me how many years I did this. And basically, twenty years ago, I started. And twenty years ago, it was so much college focused that that's all I really remember doing in the fall was you you're almost ninety percent focused on the college meetings, the college applications, getting it out for the deadline. And now you still have that. And actually, the deadlines have crept earlier and earlier. But now you also are so worried about making sure the freshmen get off to a good start and you you're having a five oh four meeting and you have a kid crying in your office. And so I I think it's, you know, it's it's about staying organized and prioritizing and.
I I ask that because I'm I'm blown away by how much I forget your department does. And if someone said, what does the council department do? I was, well, you know, I would have talked about the college and I would have left out so much of this. And that just makes me wonder, there's a lot of really important stuff here. Do you have the right resources?
Yeah, I I think about fifteen years ago, ten, fifteen years ago, I had a caseload of two hundred and thirty. And that was more manageable than one hundred and eighty is today.
Right.
You're just dealing with more, you're dealing with more more personal issues and.
You know, I think too, and and to add to that, that's why we've looked at our resources differently in a secondary and a tertiary way to support school counseling. Like the addition of Dr. Ernst, like, hey, we want you to focus on the five oh four. We had a school social worker, right? There there was some relief from that. Our second Capstone teacher, right? We're hoping to work in conjunction around internships, career, like, how do we utilize those resources to support all kids? So we're not kind of thinking in lanes, but how do we kind of share the resources to provide the best experience for our kids? In recognizing that, you know, students need different than they did a decade ago.
I also see, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also think of it like, you know, there are things that may be there right now that may be moved once we add these other positions that we've talked about, right? So would it be better to wait till we add them to see whether there's a need? Because I think, you know, right now, you've already said that we don't have enough of the other psych, all of those. So is some of that spilling here because everybody's trying to help each other, right? So, you know.
Well, when you say do get it all done, you do get it done, which is admirable.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have a great team and and from the administrative assistants to the counselors to, I mean, the value of having an intern at Henry James. You know, we're we're going to have one at both schools next year. So that certainly helps to just add another another person that can be there to help.
That's great.
If you guys are getting hurt, that that doesn't help the kids. True. Appreciate the presentation. I, like I said, I I forget how much you're.
Yeah, this has been incredible. I was just, I totally off the topic, but I was just curious. Those college like visits and interviews and stuff like that, how what percentage of kids do them in school versus going to visit or going to see some? Like, my daughter seems to get a ton of emails about, like, this school's visiting, this school's visiting. Do a large percentage of kids actually?
Yeah, I think it's a, when you think about the process, you the going, nothing can take the place of going to see a school, right? It looks great on online, you know, pictures look beautiful. But then actually going to the campus adds such value. So we certainly encourage students to go, if they can, to go see a school. If they can do it during a school year, that's great. If we can do it during the summer, that's fine. So usually, a lot of our students will do that in the spring and summer. So then they come back in the fall and they, a lot of them have an idea of where they want to apply. Now the reps come to visit. And you already know, I'm interested in going to Villanova, the Villanova rep is coming. A lot of times that rep is the person who's going to be reading the applications from Simsbury High School. So now it allows you as a student, you know, so there might be seven students interested in Villanova that that go see the rep. Now the rep can put a face to the application they're going to be getting in a month. And if the student says, you know, I had a question I didn't get a chance to ask when I was on the visit, you know, about the business department or, you know, it it just gives you an ability to.
No, but I was more like, your office also coordinates all of those people as well.
Yes.
You didn't even tell us that.
That's just like, I was like, oh, can we get rid of that? But no, we clearly can't.
That's great. It's great to have that. It's really, it's good both for the 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 students to have that ability to. But but we, as counselors, we meet with the reps when they come to 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 make sure that, you know, we can keep updated on what we're doing at at the school and they can update us on what they're doing.
So I just have one question.
And the reps like it.
Yeah.
The reps like to come out to the schools.
They love, they love coming to Simsbury. I mean, they just, they always love, just especially in the fall when the leaves are out. It's a great, great place to come visit.
I want to ask you a non-college question. You mentioned trying to diversify the AP population, the kids taking AP classes. We made a move years ago to really push kids into the exam, taking the exam. So do is is there an avenue for kids to take that first AP but maybe not have to take the exam that might sort of demystify the AP class for them?
Yeah, I mean, our policy at the school is that they have an option. They they can either take the AP exam. If they choose not to take the AP exam, they have to take the final exam for that class.
Yep.
You know, so that is that is a possibility. I don't know, you know, I don't even know if it's, if they even think that far ahead to the exam. I I I think it's maybe just, this is AP.
It's just the idea of a hand.
Reverse course.
Right. We have student reps we can ask, are you aware of the exam when you start the class? You know that there's going to be exam at the end or do you?
Yeah. Does that impact your choice of taking the class or not?
I think honestly, well, I think I think the AP exam scares people, but it's better than having to take the final because you don't have to send your AP score to anyone if you don't want to.
Right.
But your final could determine if you pass the class.
It's a negative.
Which you got to pay for the, you got to pay for the AP exam, which might be a one.
Also, most teachers, the final exam, if you don't take the AP exam, is just a past AP exam. Like, you're going to end up taking one anyway. And it's going to count more if you're not taking the actual AP exam.
Have any of your friends or anybody you know in your grades shied away because of the exam?
I mean, if anything, I think they're shying away just because of the rigor.
Straddle in that law.
Yeah. Shy away because of the rigor, not the.
Correct. Their parents present.
Yeah, that doesn't happen that often.
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Maybe more in senior year where people take the AP exam or people take the AP class and not the exam because like they're already in college.
They know they're college.
Yeah. I know they're college, they may know. Yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah.
They're getting the exam.
That's interesting.
Does that happen a lot? What percentage, do we know what percentage that is?
What percentage?
That that they don't take, they take a class and don't take an exam of any.
It used to be a lot higher.
Because I don't think it's that, it doesn't seem high.
And they're right. I think it's very low from with the sophomores and juniors. And it's a little higher with the seniors, but but it's, yeah, it's not as high as it used to be.
Do we have a large number of 10th graders taking AP?
No, I think we're down to, we have three AP biology classes, but they're probably like.
Well, but they've, but the sophomores have also gone to seminar.
That's right.
Correct. Yeah, but I I was, I think AP bio has probably thirty kids in the classroom now. Seminar, about thirty probably too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
See you.
All right. I'm off my APs.
Okay.
And then my only question for Alex and Olivia is, are you guys good with the new bell schedule? Have you adjusted?
Yeah.
I know where I'm going now, which is. You're rolling with it.
This is right.
It's all good.
I hope you know where to go.
Do you see advantages to it?
I think the advantage is that I have a period three and a period seven free. So if it was the old schedule, I would have never been able to go in late or early.
I have second and third, so I get to sleep in really late on D days.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
All right. So now we are back to a second public audience.
Don't leave Greg, because I, what I have to say dovetails with what I just ditched my whole speech. You guys can be really.
Move over if you want.
Hi, I'm Lori Boykow from Fifteen First Road in Simsbury. And I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. As a parent who's had several students graduate and one that's a freshman, I want to point out a couple of things that I think are working really well and a couple of things that we need to look at that would help as students graduate. One is my freshman is in a study hall this year. I don't know if it was like this for the older students, but his study hall teacher happens to be Mr. Jack Meddick, which is Mr. and Mrs. Meddick's son. And I think he does some interacting with the students in there about, you know, this assignment's missing or what happened with this grade privately, discreetly. But in a way, it keeps the students sort of on track, particularly for a freshman, which takes some of the heat off of me as a parent and also catches some things that I might not catch. And he really likes that interaction, so I think that's really awesome. I wanted to dovetail on the AP conversation because something I learned this year is about a test called a CLEP test. And what I learned from my perspective is that my student might not have to take an AP exam but can now fulfill a requirement at his particular college from a class he took in high school and has the knowledge base if he takes the CLEP exam. And for eighty-nine dollars, he can fulfill one of his Gen N requirements, which is super cost effective. And when we were looking at the percentage of students that graduate in six years, you know, it used to be like four, and now we're looking at the cost of six. And if there's any time in college, they drop the ball to the class and have to withdraw or something, it's really nice to be able to take a CLEP and add in an extra class without having taken an AP. Because you don't need to have taken the, you do have to get the score, but you don't have to have taken the AP. So maybe publicizing that more or, I don't know, maybe I just missed it, but I think that's a really good option for our students to know about. And. Oh, a lot of parents in a lot of areas of college talk about dual enrollment. And I think that's what you're talking about with the UConn program.
Yes.
And I'm really glad to see us doing that because a lot of students go into college with college credits. And therefore, if they can either graduate in three and a half years or it doesn't take them five or six, which is a tremendous cost. So anything we can do to bolster that, promote that, let people know how to do that would be awesome. Because I didn't know you didn't have to take a sort of class to take a CLEP test. You don't have to be able to pass. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Please. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Pierce of Third Street, Fox Denver. I actually wasn't originally going to say anything, but hearing Greg's related presentations, I appreciate. But also hearing some of the issues I wasn't even aware of. I just thought I would mention that back when I was at high school in the eighties, we had a program called peer counseling, which, I mean, I don't think it's a new concept, but a good, a big point of it was there was a drop-in center. And after hearing the kids at both schools are coming in upset and have a place to go, that was a place to go back then. There was somebody maybe monitoring it, places to sit. So I just want to suggest maybe looking into that because that may be a good use of resources to help with kids that maybe wouldn't have impact the counselors individually, but might impact like a support staff that could be set up to support kids who are having a tough time. I was a peer counselor, we had a great program where we did training programs and we met with all different kinds of students and we get all kinds of support. So I'd happy to give input, having personally done that, even though it was a while ago. But I thought that might be something to consider as a good way to use resources and take what heat off of the counselors.
Okay. Seeing that you are our only public audience, we are going to enter into executive session. Our next regular board meeting will be April twelfth, twenty twenty-two at the Board of Ed conference room. But one more time, public hearing, April, what?
It's now April twenty-sixth.
Sorry. Thank you. This is why I want to change. April twenty-sixth will be at the Board of Ed conference room.
No, it'll be at Terrafill School.
Yeah, Terrafill.
Second meeting of the month is offsite.
April twenty-sixth will be at T Mill School and, but we will be a public hearing together on April fifth at the library. All right. With that, I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I'll go do whatever you didn't do.
Tara did whatever you need us to do. All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all.